One of these individuals states, "A title of social justice coordinator at First Eutyrion Universal Church," the same church I believe our mayor attends, "one is a District 535 Board Member." A non-regulated activities document dated January 31st, 2026, was issued by the city for this mob protest at 244 Soldiers Field Drive Southwest, not 307th Street where the Veterans Memorial is located. The picture clearly shows the protesters at the Veterans Memorial with their signs, other nation flags, and flying the American flag upside down. Quite a different story from the narrative written on the city forum for 20 people and signed by Amy Larson, the event organizer. As a retired 27-plus-year federal law enforcement officer and president of the Bell of Honor, I have stood on the tarmac, flaglines. We have honored the fallen at Shanksville, Pentagon, Vietnam Memorial, Washington, D.C., Air Force Academy, National ES Memorial, Soldier's Field Memorial, and at many graves. I am a strong supporter of our veterans, law enforcement, and first responders. I am appalled this was allowed to take place, but not surprised to do to the leadership of our mayor and other leaders in this community. The question now becomes, what will you do as city council to prevent this action from ever taking place again at Soldier's Field Veterans Memorial? What public action will you take to hold the person responsible for the mob protest resulting in this outrageous and disrespectful action taken at Soldier's Field Memorial this past Saturday?
Thank you. Can I ask members of the -- thank you, Mr. Thorndson, your time is up. Can I please ask members of the audience to please not respond to speakers either in the affirmative or in the negative? This is a public body, and we are respectful to each other in this room. So you will have your two minutes, but please let's recognize that. Next up, we have representatives from the Three Rivers Restorative Justice, Jeff Stillwell and Toni K. Maggs-Cow. Are you going as two separate people?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
City Council President, Mayor Norton, members of the council, and community members. I'm here today on behalf of Three Rivers Restorative Justice and our dedicated Board of Directors, numerous volunteers, and community partners. I want to sincerely thank Mayor Norton and Council President Schubring for issuing a proclamation in November recognizing both Restorative Justice Month and the work of our organization. This proclamation was more than a formal gesture. It affirms Rochester's commitment to being a safe, inclusive, and compassionate community. By lifting up restorative justice, you are recognizing that accountability is not only about punishment, but about repairing harm, rebuilding trust, and strengthening relationships. Restorative justice centers the voices of those most impacted by harm, those that are harmed, those that cause harm, and the broader community, and invites them into dialogue, understanding, and shared responsibility. Your recognition signals that Rochester values approaches grounded in communication, equity, and meaningful accountability, and understands that prevention and healing go hand in hand. For T R R J, this proclamation honors years of collaborative work with community partners, youth, schools, and families across southeast Minnesota. It affirms the impact of restorative dialogue, community-based conflict resolution, and education in reducing recidivism, restoring hope, and creating pathways towards reconciliation. By declaring Restorative Justice Month, you also invite our entire community to learn and gauge in ways in responding to harm. Thank you for your support in healing equity and community well-being.
Thank you. Next up, we have Virginia Wright Peterson.
Mayor, council members, many of us support safe borders and a lawful initiative to arrest persons with outstanding judicial warrants. What we are experiencing is indiscriminate sweeping of our streets and the arrest of U.S. citizens and others with authorization to live and work here while their applications wind their way through the complex, lengthy, expensive, broken immigration system. The cruelty and violence with which masked federal agents have arrested people in this city and swept them to abhorrent detention locations without providing information to their families on their location and preventing them from timely access to legal assistance and medical care is appalling and unconstitutional. People are afraid to go to school, go to work, to go to get medical appointments. I ask that you do everything in your power to protect everyone in our city until DHS adjusts their lawless tactics. Please use all powers available to you through the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution to restrict these unlawful and immoral actions of federal agents in our city. This may require going beyond current precedents, and inaction makes you complicit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Klein.
Hi, my name is Kelly, and I am a 37-year resident of Rochester. I moved here when I was a single mom, and I remember most about Rochester was the dichotomy that I remember I had a boyfriend once, and he said, "Oh, my God, I can't believe all the rich people here in Rochester." And I was like, "I can't believe all the poor people here." So, and I tell that story because if you haven't seen ICE out on our streets, I'm going to tell you that they are there, that you might be living your life and going about your daily life and not knowing that ICE is here. 10 days ago, I was running an errand down near Marion Road, and I came upon what I thought was an accident scene. I went up to see what was going on, because I'm a nurse, and it wasn't -- it was an accident. It was a hit-and-run. It was ICE agents, and they were kind of smiling and laughing, and I thought, "Oh, how weird is that?" And one of them rolled down his window, and he said, "You just stay right there." And I thought, "That's strange," until I figured out that pretty soon, two more ICE vehicles rolled up. So a total of 12 ICE officers in full military gear, carrying long guns and steel batons, came at us. We were doing nothing. There was a bunch of community people that came out because their community member had been kidnapped. She is a U.S. citizen. This happened right on the streets of Rochester. And they -- another vehicle took her away. These men came out, and they started pepper spraying people right in front of me. Luckily, I was so scared shitless, I had backed way up, because I'm like, "I'm an old grandma with asthma. I can't get pepper sprayed." And then, these days, I just think about that, and I feel guilty that I didn't stand more for my neighbors. And so I'm asking you, please, know that ICE is on our streets. They're almost causing accidents. I've seen them stop in front of people and put on their brakes and come out to people and open their car doors. And I tell you what, one of these days --
Thank you, Ms. Klein.
Thank you. One of these days, it's going to be -- it's going to happen here. We're going to have a violent thing.
ICE shall now!
Thank you.
ICE shall now!
Next up.
ICE shall now!
Next, we have Amy Cocket. Please respect the council chambers.
Hi, I'm Amy Cocket, and I've lived here even longer, 56 years. I think we moved here the 1st of February, 29 below, in 1970. I just want to bring to your attention a shocking incident that happened right out here in the parking lot at noon on Saturday. Maybe you caught it. It was on, I think K A L TV had Andy Sibley's video of what happened. I heard about it later in the afternoon at an event I was at that Kim Hicks told us about. She came to this incident because she was called by the teenager who was in the car, who was being surrounded by, I imagine, ICE, but we don't know. He called her because she's a mother of one of his friends, and she knew him. And you can see in the video that she is trying to inform the agents that this boy, who was born in Rochester, graduated from high school in Rochester, was a U.S. citizen in case that was what was going on. They refused to listen. They did not say why they were abducting him. They did not say who they were. They did not say where they were taking him. I just think, having been a mother of teenagers, and many of you have had teenagers, what would you do? What do you do when your teen doesn't come home? First of all, you call their friends, you know, if they don't come home on time. Then you think, "Oh, my gosh, is this -- is my kid in the hospital?" Then you call the jails. Where did this mother call? Where did this boy get taken? And this happened right out in front of the government center where he should have been safe, right next to the jail. I hope that our police will start doing what happened at the St. Peter Police, and will intercept and protect and serve us from these kinds of incidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tina Liebling.
Good evening, Mayor Norton, Council President Schubring, and members of the council. I'm Tina Liebling, State Representative in House District 24B, representing part of Rochester and a part of area outside Rochester. I'm here to urge the council to join the lawsuit that is currently pending in federal court, that is Minnesota versus Gnome. And also Minneapolis and St. Paul are plaintiffs in that lawsuit. This is very important, because as you have been hearing and as you all know, I'm sure, what we're experiencing here in Minnesota is not law enforcement. Clearly, there could be law enforcement. There could be legitimate arrests of people who are undocumented, who have committed criminal acts and so on, but that is not what we are seeing. What we're seeing is an invasion calling itself law enforcement. We're seeing what folks have mentioned here: kidnappings, racial profiling, fear. And what we're seeing in Rochester is that there are big impacts on our city, impacts on education of our children, on health care, on our very economy. We are seeing this attack, and it is an attack. It is retribution from the Trump administration against Minnesota. It is an attack that is creating many harms. Now Minneapolis and St. Paul have, and the state itself, have laid out many of the harms that are happening in this lawsuit. We have harms happening here in Rochester, and we should be detailing those harms as well and laying them before the federal court. Because win or lose, this is a moment to stand up. This has never happened before in our entire history. This is a moment when we need to take a stand. There is no hiding from this. Whether you agree with enforcement, whatever you think about enforcement of the law, this is not law enforcement. We are the third-largest city. Thank you for listening. I urge you to join the lawsuit, either joining as a plaintiff or with an amicus brief. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Barry Larson.
I'm Barry, and this is hard for me to do, but I feel like I have to. I didn't have the easiest childhood growing up. Some of it was my fault, maybe most of it. But I found my way into operating engineers, and I got a good job with great benefits. While working for Tyzak on a couple of city projects last fall, I was a victim of indecent exposure from three separate coworkers. I reported this to my direct boss, who told me to talk to the president of the company that same night. I was put on paid leave by the end of the night, while the offenders were allowed to continue working. There were -- there's more to this in the packet that I submitted earlier today, but the short of it is, within three weeks, my paid leave was stopped with no conversation or communication. I have since had no further communications from anyone from Tyzak about this, nor have I ever been asked what actually happened on November 15, 2025. I found a board member of Tyzak and the owner of the parent company, Pack, out of Wayzata, and I brought to his office personally this very same packet, the one that you guys have. I still haven't heard from anybody. I am here so that it doesn't happen again, and no one in the public has to deal with it or a child, as they were standing on a sidewalk in a residential area when this happened. It was hard enough for me, a grown man, to process it. Despite this, I'm still hoping that there can be a solution found between all the stakeholders that prevent this from happening again. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Brendan Nedson. I hope I got your last name correct.
Maybe they don't teach penmanship. Mayor, members of the council, I come to you today to encourage you to take any action you can to stop the authoritarian actions taken by federal agencies we have seen happening across Minnesota. The actions of these government agencies are meant to do nothing but instill terror in the residents of our city. If it was about immigration, they would not be targeting Minnesota with its low percentage of undocumented immigrants. If it was about crime, they would not be detaining those with no criminal record. If it was about justice, they would not rush to defend the killing of those with lies and slander. These actions are meant to make citizens afraid to stand up against the injustice they see before them. Inaction does nothing to stop this abuse of power. Worse, it emboldens those who wield it. It signals their tactics will go unopposed. It normalizes these actions in the minds of those who support them. Instead, take action today to show that Rochester, Minnesota, is not going to stand idly by and let unaccountable, secret police force terrorize its residents.
Thank you.
Demand law enforcement agents be unmasked. Ban the use of public property for staging operations and entering non-public spaces without a judicial warrant. Ban detainment of any individual without a judicial warrant. Ban law enforcement use of facial recognition and AI technology. End city contracts with service providers that make data available to ICE either directly or via bad information security practices. End relationships with banks such as Wells Fargo that provide financing for detention facilities ICE uses. Join Minnesota versus Gnome. This is how you show compassion, by recognizing now is the time to take action that stands up for those who are afraid to stand up for themselves.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Olmer.
Thank you, council, madam mayor. Mayo Clinic is dependent on people from other countries coming here and as employees and as patients, and I think we need to keep this a safe place for them to come. Not only our economy, but our very hearts depend on this. I don't think our immigrants' friends are safe. I don't feel safe. And my heritage goes back in America on both sides, as far as I can go. I don't feel safe in Rochester right now. I turned off my phone so that I can't be tracked. I think that it's important that we hold federal agents to the same standards that we hold Rochester's finest to. Veterans died for this constitution, and we need to uphold it as well as state, federal, and local laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Leonard.
Okay, I'm going to talk fast because there's not a lot of time. My name is Heather Leonard. I am a 10-year resident of Ward 5 in Rochester and a nurse, along with my two sons. I attended the last city council meeting and paid close attention, driven to interest by the critical topic at hand, ICE in our community. Thank you for listening to my comments. Our neighbors are being abducted from their homes, torn from their children and families. Two public executions have occurred in Minnesota city streets without due process and with immediate proclamation of guilt by the federal government. The state BCA has been denied access to the evidence for those investigations. Two independent journalists were recently arrested by the FBI for covering a protest a violation of the free press and First Amendment of the Constitution. The ACLU of Minnesota reported receiving over 500 reports of misconduct by DHS in late January 2026. The U.S. Press Freedom Tracker lists 17 violations for free press in Minnesota in the last six months, all related to the DHS invasion of Minnesota. They are violating several amendments. The Fourth Amendment, a reasonable search and seizure. They took Chong Lee Scott Thau's home. They broke in his front door, and later he was released, as he's a U.S. citizen. They invited excessive force. There are reports that DHS has provided minimal and inadequate training with as little as four weeks of online training. There are reports of detainees arriving to hospitals with unexplained and severe injuries, custodians, and mandragans, retaliation, and free speech. Many reports documenting that agents have been following protesters and constitutional observers to their homes or meeting them there, and violating the Tenth Amendment and Minnesota's sovereignty against an invasion and illegal surge. Mayor Norton and Police Chief Franklin, I would like you to look at the executive order signed by Mayor Brandon Johnson in Chicago and the way that the police department and local government are working together to uphold the law and protect community members from illegal activity by federal agents. And then Councilmember Palmer, you are the representative for my ward. Your seat is up for election this year. Your constituents deserve to know your opinion and your response to the unconstitutional and illegal actions committed by federal agents of Minne -- in Minnesota. I watched the meeting last time, and I didn't hear you say anything, so I went and looked at your Facebook. I didn't see anything. I went and looked at your website. There was nothing there. Nowhere can I find that you have commented on the invasion of DHS in Minnesota and our constitutional protections.
Thank you.
I sent you an email and did not hear back from you.
Miss Leonard.
I'm your constituent, and I'm asking you, what are you actually doing for Ward 5 specific to the unconstitutional and illegal invasion of DHS in Rochester? Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we have 16 more members of the public who have signed up for public comment. I would invite a motion to suspend the rules and allow those 16 individuals to speak. So moved by Councilmember Fredericks and seconded by Councilmember Doring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Our next speaker is Kautar Regal.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Our community is grieving the tragic deaths of Renee Good and Alex Pretty, both killed by federal immigration agents here in Minnesota. These are not just names in the news, but neighbors, friends, and family whose lives mattered. I am a student. I was born here, and I don't know any country other than this one. I'm scared to go to school. Many young people in our community feel that fear because of the intense presence and actions of federal agents. No child should have to live in constant fear. No family should be torn apart. Tonight, I ask this council to choose compassion, safety, and human dignity. Please support efforts that prioritize community safety, demand accountability for these deaths, and affirm the value of all residents, no matter the immigration status. Choose dignity, choose humanity, choose our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maande Gaus.
I'm a little nervous, but I'll do my best. My name is Maande. I live in Rochester, and today we are here because of what happened in our community. It's a deeply concern, what we are experiencing in some many of us never expected. We need to come together and stand, unite, and many of you in Rochester, even Minnesota. We know what happened in Renee Good, Alex, I don't want to mispronounce his last name. May they both be resting bees. We belong here as immigrants. We are safe here. We pay tax just like everyone else. We follow rules. The only thing I have done was a speeding ticket, and we contribute to this country. Yet often, we are blamed that things we didn't cause most of them. I came to America many years ago believing in promise, free fairness, and opportunity. I never thought -- when I come here today, and then the people in our community feel afraid, feel -- to feel need, they constantly briefing, they are carried the document to feel secure. I always carry my passport just in case, then I don't want to lose it then because you have to pay money again. But that being said, leaving a fear of the unknown, it's not a fair to us. It's not fair to our family, our children, and just to what Coaster said. She doesn't know anywhere else. She was born in Rochester, and she was raised in here. And our future history teaches us what happened. When fear replaces understanding, and we must not allow this lesson to be ignored. That's why we are here today. You guys, excuse me if I'm saying this correct or wrong, but you are representing all of us, and we ask you to stand with us, correct what is wrong, and help ensure that justice, dignity, and unite, God, of both forward. As immigrants, we are not a garbage. We are here to do what's best for all of us, and we're here to follow the rules, and we ask you to help us and to protect us as a dignity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mohad Abdulhalali.
Hello, good evening, mayor and the members of council. My name is Mohad. I'm a Rochester resident. I'm here today because our city is talking about being a compassionate city, and compassion has more than just words. Right now, many people in our community are scared. Immigrant families are afraid to drive to work, take their kids to school, and even go to the hospital. This fear is real. I was at the hospital the last three days. Lobby is empty. What's happening in Rochester because of ICE activity feels aggressive and hard to trust. This is not about breaking the law. It's about following the law the right way. If federal agents are working in our city, they should have -- they should follow clear rules. That means proper warrants, not just administration warrants, but judicial. Not stopping people randomly, showing who they are, and using body cams so they're accountable. Our local police should focus on keeping residents safe, not adding to fear. City property should not be used for actions that scare families and divide our community. Rochester is known as a place of care, healing, and respect. We can't say we're compassionate while allowing people in our city to live in fear. Tonight, I'm asking you to take real action, protect residents, set clear limits, and show that compassion in Rochester is not just a promise, but something that people can feel and see. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Jan Wirsma.
Thank you, mayor, president, and council members. I am really not sure where your power begins and ends, but we've heard a lot of wheres is so far, all of them valid. I would like just to say three things, three points. Require the Rochester Police Department to enforce all applicable laws that ICE is currently violating: traffic, license plates, judicial warrants, no random traffic stops, making protecting civilians their top priority. I would like them to, I would like you to have the city forbid mask-wearing by the ICE agents and require functioning body cameras and ID for all federal agents, and prevent the ICE and other agents from parking, staging, loitering, or carrying out operations on city property, including our parking ramps. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Becca Herbstrat.
Thank you for your time and for holding this meeting. I am not someone who likes the spotlight or public speaking, and I didn't even desire to speak here tonight, but I just feel very compelled. This has been a very, very hard time. I have many friends and family members, and they are very impacted by everything that is going on. I have a family member I can't even see, and I was looking forward to meeting for the first time because they're so terrified of moving here and this being their first experience here in this country. I grew up with a very different view of undocumented immigrants, and I had many experiences, and I have met so many immigrants in my life, and they're the hardest-working people. They're contributing to our economy through our restaurants and through many other methods. Go to the restaurants in our community that are providing food from these populations and support them as much as you can. See how empty they are and see how much this is impacting our economy. I very much appreciate taking this time to consider not only being compassionate and loving towards other humans. We're all equal, and we're all created in the same image, and this is a very important topic. And it's impacting not only people's hearts and lives, but our economy, and it is very, very important that we take action now. I have nothing more to add to everything that everyone else has said because they've said it so eloquently, but thank you for this time.
Thank you. Next, we have Wes Lund.
The Soldier's Field Memorial was created by a large number of people who crisscrossed the state and the region, taking donations from VFWs and asking people to make donations to pay for the pavers that constructed that public to pay for the pavers that constructed that publicly-funded site. It's not a church, but it's virtually a shrine in a sense. A memorial for the people who gave their bodies in this temporal existence that we could have the freedoms of the First and Second Amendment and so forth. It's not a place to trample on. It should be respected. The permit was given to a group of people to exercise their constitutional rights at a site more than 100 yards away from where they eventually gathered on that day to wave flags of foreign nations. Please consider the breakdown in basic decorum when people invade a church. That memorial isn't a church. Nevertheless, it ranks up very high for all of the people who visit it from all across this country, who come to Rochester. It's one of the main memorials to the fallen in Minnesota. It's a site for all of the Foreign Legion people who visit our city. It should be respected and treasured, and we're stewards of that. The city council, you all are stewards of that. Please respect it and protect it from future protest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lucie Anne Cronig.
Hello. My name is Lucie Anne Cronig. I live in Ward Four, Sutterly Park neighborhood, and these are my own views. I'm here tonight regarding the proposal to reaffirm Rochester as a compassionate city. I understand that this resolution is affirmational. It doesn't change policy or the city's legal relationship with ICE. Reaffirming values does matter, but reassurance alone will not stop the harm that is taking place. If Rochester truly wants to be a compassionate city in practice, not just in name, I urge you to pair this resolution with action, specifically by joining the Amicus Brief with other Minnesota cities to document the real local impacts of recent federal law enforcement actions. Of recent federal enforcement actions, ICE. Correction. What we are seeing right now with federal immigration enforcement in Minnesota, including its ripple effects here in Rochester, is not okay. It is not legally okay. It is not morally okay. It is not humanly okay. Harm like this does not arrive all at once. It creeps in through normalization, silence, desensitization, the idea that what's happening is temporary or only happening to other people. This is not about undocumented criminals. That framing is deeply misleading. People with legal status, people in the middle of paperwork, people with no criminal record at all, and even US citizens are being questioned, detained, and traumatized. Our brown, black, and foreign-born neighbors are living with fear for simply existing, and that fear does not stay contained. It shows up in schools, workplaces, housing instability, and whether people seek medical care at places like mail, or report crimes to the local police. This is a public safety issue for all of Rochester. I am asking the council to be visible, vocal, and loud, and on the record, in defense of the people who make this city their home. Some, I think between 17,000 and 18,000 immigrants in this city calling it home. I hope that you will not only reaffirm Rochester as a compassionate city, but also will join the Amicus Brief. Our neighbors, our friends, our families are counting on you to use your powers to protect them.
Thank you, Ms. Cronig.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Sibley.
Hello. Somebody may know me. My grandpa was the founder of the Soldiers' Field Veterans Memorial Committee. My grandpa, my uncle was the Assistant Chief of Police. A lifelong Rochester resident, 44 years old. I own a business here in town and I've run it for 12 years. I am currently closed, unable to operate my business because of the presence of ICE in town and my unwillingness to participate in our society when lawless thugs are abounding. I come here today, though, because I could be quiet no longer. I witnessed an abduction out in front of our very government center. The constitutional rights of this American citizen were trampled upon, and I was forced to witness it. I know that as a resident of this community, when I have violated the law, I've been held feet to the fire and accountable for my actions, and I'm wondering why now that isn't the case with these agents. I saw him detained, a man who is a citizen who presented his passport, who committed no crime. This is not the first occurrence of this, nor do I fear it will be the last. I'm requesting that the city take action, and that action, I would hope, be to reassign some of the police department in force and create a new ICE, an ICE observational committee. I believe that you guys have five officers now working on the Community Action Team. I would request that emergency funds are activated and that those officers are reassigned to an ICE engagement committee that oversees the behavior of ICE in our town. I would also ask that ICE agents follow the law, that they not wear masks, that they report to the police if they're going to have a sustained raid or operation of any kind like that, that they are not allowed to use facial recognition, that they're, just as any other law officers would, that they have ID and are not allowed to wear masks.
Thank you, Mr. Sibley.
I'd also like to request that we join the lawsuit. We all stood and took the pledge of allegiance and repeated the phrase "liberty and justice for all."
Thank you.
I'd really like to see justice upheld.
Thank you.
Members of City Council and Mayor Norton, my name is Melissa Thompson. I live and work in Rochester. This is my home, and I want to do what I can to make the people in my home safe. I ask that this council do the same. I understand that on the agenda tonight is an action item to reaffirm Rochester as a compassionate city. We need compassion, yes, but also action. ICE and other federal agents have come not only to our state of Minnesota, but to our city of Rochester, and they have shown themselves to lack any compassion. They disregard the law and they ignore our constitutional rights. They harass, or threaten, or detain residents who are not committing crimes. I want to make it clear that I want ICE out of our city and out of our state. I know that that is not within the powers of this council, but I urge you to take whatever actions are possible. First, require RPD officers to be enforcing all applicable laws that ICE is violating as is being seen and documented by constitutional observers, including traffic violations, removing or covering license plates, making traffic stops at random. People are getting hurt, and I worry that someone is going to be hurt more seriously. Second, push for agents in our city to be required to show their faces and display ID. And third, prohibit ICE from staging, parking, loitering, or carrying out operations on city property, including parking ramps. This is not a full comprehensive list, but a handful of small ideas. To say that I find the actions of ICE unsettling would be a massive understatement. I'm a cliche. I'm a barista with an English degree. I don't know all that you guys have, but I am doing what I can. I am trying to take action to make the city safe because I care about our neighbors, and I want you to show that you care about our neighbors, too. Take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. First, I just want to thank the city of Rochester. I've been here a little over a year from the deep south, and I have every week found a new reason to find thankfulness for living in Rochester and how beautiful it is. When I grew up, we had the Bible, the Declaration, and the Constitution, and I came from a very long line of people who served in the armed forces and in law enforcement. I have a lot of respect for the work that they do and how hard it is on them. I ask that if we have to abide by the social contract of the Constitution, shouldn't ICE, shouldn't they be respecting our Fourth Amendment rights, our First Amendment rights? Shouldn't they be more concerned about having body cams on them so they don't have any accidental shootings because they're jostling their phone and their camera and their gun? I don't know about you, but I don't know of many examples throughout history where people with masks and guns were ever viewed as the good guys. I don't feel safe knowing that anyone can claim to be ICE and abduct me, and I have no way to fight back and defend myself or else I'm committing potentially a crime because they haven't identified themselves in any kind of verifiable way. How much money are we paying in taxes for just the hotel stays that they're doing? Not to mention the fact that they are rounding up American citizens, the accidental deaths that are occurring that never needed to happen in the first place. Before ICE came to Minnesota, I never had to shop for a gas mask. Now, I carry one in my vehicle because I'm afraid that I might be trapped in a neighborhood that they're doing something all of a sudden and rolling out gases of what color, what type, using Low Dar, whatever, equipment against citizens of America, weapons of war against citizens. I ask that you do what it needs to do, take, to keep us safe because ICE isn't serving and protecting me. I've never been afraid of my neighbor.
Thank you.
I've been afraid of a guy in a mask.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Bale Bakken, resident of Rochester my whole life, 41 years, free man of the republic. So what I'd like for everybody to understand is that, okay, these guys are a corporation. They don't have feelings. They don't take that into consideration. They understand the law and commerce. By the way, I love that stoplight theme right there, you know, because you only have authority over commerce. Stoplight, pretty funny. So anyway, dereliction of duty, do you guys understand what that is? So for the last eight, nine months now, I've been gathering enough evidence against everybody in this whole government center, police force, everybody, I mean, dirty. So dereliction of duty, what the main thing of it is, is financial fraud, because you're taking taxpayer money and you're paying people to oppress us with doing nothing about it. There's no accountability. Who's got authority here? Can anybody here say they got authority? No, the community can, because they have the authority. They're sovereign. You know, they have the just say. You know, that's what they don't get. They got to understand that. You know, they're not going to get nothing if they don't want to stand up for it, okay? Your land is the land where you stand, so. But I'll try to get down to the government center tomorrow, serve more papers or whatever, but I've been trespassed from there for trying to do my constitutional duty and stick up for the unfortunate people that don't know the laws and stuff like that. And I've been arrested two, three times now with no assistance from RPD at all. I mean, aren't they supposed to protect the Constitution? I didn't say protect me. Just protect the reason what liberty stands for, okay? Me to be able to go down to the government center to grieve against the government, to write grievances on the sheriff's department, stuff like that, without being infringed on. But I get arrested every time I go down there. Do you guys know why that is? I mean, to me, that sounds like First Amendment violation hardcore to the most. I mean, anytime anybody sticks up for themselves and shows any kind of resistance towards your guys' corporation BS, you arrest them, you silence them.
Thank you, Mr. Bale Bakken.
Oh, I'm not engaging commerce, so your stoplight don't work because I'm not engaging commerce.
Thank you.
Just so you know that next time. But just remember, community.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abdi. I'm here because something upsetting happened to my family yesterday. Our house was surrounded by ICE. There was vehicles outside, but there was also agents standing on foot, standing around our house and clouding our backyard. At the time, only my siblings were home. My mom wasn't there. We're US citizens, and my siblings were born here in Rochester. Still, this happened. My siblings were scared, and my 12-year-old sister has special needs, and this was especially hard on her. She's still afraid, and she couldn't go to school even today. Even after the ICE agents left, the fear didn't go away. It stayed with them. It stayed in our house. Rochester often calls itself a city of compassion, but I want to believe that. But compassion has to show in moments like this, especially when kids are involved. I know my family isn't the one, isn't the only one that this happened to. A lot of families in our community are living with this fear, and it affects children even after the moment is over. I'm not here to argue. I'm here to ask you to take this seriously and to make, no family should feel unsafe in their own home. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Now, next on my list is Abdi Rahimi Farah. Is, did one of the other want to speak as well? Okay, thank you.
Council President, Mayor, Councilmembers, Doring, Palmer, Frederick, Wall, Miller, and Keen, my comments are going to pale in comparison to the heartfelt words that we've heard tonight and the personal impact. I simply wanted to come here to acknowledge and thank you for your individual leadership that you are taking, the conversations you're having in the community, and the collective leadership that you're having. I would, we all know that there is economic impact that this time and moment we are experiencing. Short-term impact, restaurants that have closed, workers who are afraid to come into work, people who are leaving school so they can take a job to support their families. We all understand that there are immediate impacts that are happening. There are other longer-term impacts, and I've spoken to some of you, spoken to Congressman Finsted and Governor Walz, to help people understand that this moment in time, it needs to be addressed, and also to understand that this could likely have lasting impact on our community and on the state of Minnesota. So I simply wanted to say, in many ways, you are very much living your brand of being a compassionate city by creating this safe space to allow people in this community to gather, to have the courage to talk with you, for you to listen closely, and for you to deliberate on how to best respond, and I simply wanted to express my appreciation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the Rochester City Council, thank you for your attention to my concerns. There's been some moaning about a public monument, a veteran's monument, tonight. I served. My name is there. That thing don't mean shit. That thing don't mean shit. If the values for which that monument was built don't exist in this city, we have law enforcement complicit in the assault of our constitutional right. Our immigrant neighbors, our sons and daughters, brown, black, Latino, Hispanic, Somali, you don't love them enough, apparently, because you want them black-bagged and thrown out of this town. My name is Kyle Pike, and I'm a Rochester area resident, disabled combat veteran, and student at One Own Estate. I return to you this evening to address the same glaring problem staring down at you, the unprecedented reign of terror ripping apart our beloved community at the hands of masked Nazi thugs. Immigration and Customs Enforcement is terrorizing and oppressing Minnesota during what's been called the Trump Revenge Tour. Get familiar with it. Councilmember Palmer, Trump Revenge Tour. Some of you wanted this. Alex Preddy and Renee Good, they lay dead in the street, and that can and might happen here at your lay-in action. I demand that each of you tonight, stand up, stand up for my city, for that monument. It doesn't mean shit to me, to my brothers.
Mr. Pike, please address your comments to the council.
I am. This is the city.
To the council.
Yeah, good. That's good. And join yourselves to that petition, that lawsuit. Get your names on it now, tonight, right now. Additionally, stop reclining in your ivory tower up there while immigrants are under threat. threat. President Schubring.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Pike.
Act. Do your damn jobs in these chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Pike.
And protect us, or we will elect people who can and will.
Thank you.
History is watching.
Next, we have Salah Mohammed. Salah Mohammed.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salaam alaikum. Peace unto you all and council members. Madam Mayor, my name is Salah Mohammed. I am a Rochester resident, a voter, a neighbor. I want to be honest tonight. I've never felt so conflicted in my lifetime between love and anger. Love because of the people who spoke today, love because of those who continue to show up again and again, not for themselves, but because they care about their neighbors. That love is what has uplifted our community in Minnesota, even when our president called us garbage. We responded not with hate, but with compassion. We call Rochester City a city of compassion, yet those words, yet those words ride hollow, ring hollow, when families are being attacked, terrorized, and traumatized. Just yesterday, as Abdi Brave came here, I was speaking about, on behalf of their family as well, surrounded a home in our city with children inside. The mother was away. This family are U.S. citizens. Their children were born right here in Rochester, Minnesota, and the deepest wound, a 12-year-old child with special needs crying throughout the night, terrified and unable to go to school. Today, that is trauma, that is harm, and that should never happen in a city that claims compassion. So tonight, we're not here to be told, our hands are tied. Leadership is not about excuses, it's about using every inch of the authority you do have. We need our city officials to act. We need the Rochester Police Department to enforce city laws, to hold all actors accountable, and to prioritize the protection of children and the most vulnerable to the maximum extent of the law. Let me be clear, we are voters, we are paying attention, and we will respond in kind. Compassion is not what you say, it's what you do when it's hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. That concludes our open comment period. I thank all of you for being here. I thank all of you for delivering your, uh, your thoughts, and, uh, and the majority of you know that later on our agenda is the compassionate city resolution. So with this, uh, that, I will ask Clerk Reyna to, uh, call the, uh, call the roll.
Good evening. Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Council President Schubring.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
Thank you. Next up is our city administrators report.
History is watching.
Administrators Elms, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Council President, council members, Mayor Norton, members of the community. I always start this off by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in everything that they do. Um, I did also just have a couple of things I wanted to highlight today. I think they're important, given, um, current times. Uh, first off, um, our governor has declared February as Shop Local Month, and part of the reason for that is to recognize the critical role small and local businesses play in anchoring our neighborhoods, creating jobs and strengthening the economy. Um, so it also acknowledges many of our small businesses, our immigrant-owned businesses, um, that they're experiencing fear, uncertainty, and reduced foot traffic following recent federal actions, and so one simple way that Minnesotans and Rochesterites can, uh, show up for one another is, uh, through everyday choices about where we shop and eat, and helping keep our local businesses and Main Street strong.
Ms. Elms, can you go get closer to your mic? I think we're having trouble.
To get closer and read. Um, I will try to do that. Thank you so much.
Better.
I thought this was supposed to pick me up farther away.
Better.
Or I will also talk louder. Um, so I did also, uh, want to point out that, um, as recognized today, there is a lot of fear in the community, also amongst those who are, um, going to work. So the Federal Reserve of Minnesota is conducting a brief survey. This is best filled out by business owners, our business owner, um, or you, um, want to encourage, uh, business owner to fill this out. It's available at rochesterimmun.gov/immigration. The deadline is February 6th, but that would be a way for, um, us to have better information about the current impacts on the economy, uh, based on federal enforcement activities, fear, um, but other impacts to the economy as well. Um, so that would be important information, and it is being captured confidentially, um, at the Federal Reserve. Um, that link of rochesterimmun.gov/immigration also has information that directly links you to report information to the Minnesota Attorney General's Office to help assess and address the impacts of federal actions on Minnesotans and folks in Rochester. So I just want to point that that is, uh, something that is currently available on our website, um, that we have linked to, that is also confidential data being collected. Um, we're heading into this weekend, the 19th year of Social ICE. That has a very different meaning for folks these days when we hear that, um, second part of that word, but the event hasn't changed. Um, it is an event that belongs to Rochester and reflects who we are as a community, a resilient, welcoming, um, and a community rooted in the North. Um, we've had a lot of different types of weather, um, for that, but we are encouraging folks who are, um, able and interested to still be open to gathering together in the downtown, um, over Friday and Saturday of this weekend. Um, and then I did also want to point out to our folks who rely on pub, public transit, um, or who are interested in trying public transit, um, we are actively engaging in the, um, spring service, um, efficiencies. Um, there is a virtual meeting available at rptride.com. You can get that information, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., um, next Monday, as well as noon to 1:00 p.m., um, and then in-person opportunities on the 10th and 11th, um, at 125 Live and at Sunset Terrace Elementary School, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. on both of those days. Um, we also have an ongoing online feedback form available at rptride.com. That will be available the 9th through the 13th, and that is all that I have.
Thank you. Next up, we have the mayor's report. Mayor Norton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have just a couple of things to report. As you know, I, uh, went to Washington, D.C. last week and took the opportunity to visit both of our senators' offices. Um, both gave me in-person interviews. It was my opportunity to share with both of them what's happening in our community, sharing stories like you heard, uh, today and asking for their support. Um, I had an opportunity then to go to, um, the, uh, House side, and they were in recess last week, so I did meet with three different offices, but had to meet with their staff. Um, I met with staff in, um, uh, Representative Emmer, Representative Fishbach, and Representative Finsted's office. Um, they listened politely, and again, we shared the same stories of pain that are happening in our community. Um, we shared concerns about, uh, economic and personal pain. Um, we asked that, um, ICE be drawn down from the state of Minnesota and that those that are here follow the law. Um, we asked that ICE and federal, uh, Customs and Border Patrol not be used as political weapons in our state, but used to do what was stated at the beginning of last year, which was going after violent criminals who had broken the law and were here, um, that were undocumented and here illegally. Um, so it was a, it was a good meeting. Um, we also took some time while we were there, um, to talk professionally with, uh, Chuck Ramsey and Chuck Wexler, who were both specialists in policing. We were given some time, about an hour and a half, with them just to discuss issues, so, um, very informational session, and I'll be talking with the chief and have already about some of the things that I learned and that we heard there, suggestions they had. Um, attended a few workshops as the U.S. Conference of Mayors was going on, and, uh, one of the things that happened there, uh, on a more positive note, was that, uh, the city of Rochester was awarded a $50,000 grant through the U.S. Conference of Mayors. It was one of the two grants that you guys gave us permission to apply for. We did not get the other one, um, for, it was the Healthy and Sustainable Communities Grant, and it's called Move to the Market. So we're incentivizing health equity and the purchase of local foods by local farmers. So really excited, um, about that initiative, and you'll be, uh, seeing more of that in the coming, when the weather turns and we lose the snow. Um, also wanted to point out that February is I Love to Read Month. Um, I'll be visiting the Spark Children's Museum, and I get invited every year by St. Pius Schools to go read to the kids, and sometimes some of the public schools call to. Um, people always ask me, what's my favorite thing to do as mayor? And frankly, this is one of them, getting to go into the schools and being with our children, um, and supporting them. So I Love to Read Month, um, this month. Um, also, uh, Council President Schubring and I are hosting a delegation to go to Germany June 22nd, or 12th through the 22nd. Um, if you have interest in that, you can use this QR code or come up to our office anytime and get a little more information. We will be visiting two of our sister cities, starting in Moosburg, Munich and Moosburg, which is close by. That's our sister city that was founded by Chakazama, Mayor Chakazama, and has continued many, many years now. And, uh, then we will end the, uh, 10-day trip in our other sister city on energy and environment, which is Munster, and we'll be visiting Sarbeck, which are two fantastic examples of how sustainability and energy, uh, has transformed those cities in Germany and has taught us a lot, and we're doing some of the work because of our relationship with them. So I encourage you to take a peek at that and see if it might be of interest. And lastly, um, we did have, um, a Fire and Civil Service Commission opening. I do have a couple applicants. Um, people have applied over the years. This is one. We don't get an opening in very often, so I do already have a couple applicants, but if you're, you have a burning desire, I shouldn't say burning with fire, but anyway, to serve on a commission, please, uh, quickly put your application as I'm doing, uh, the interviews as quickly as I can to fill that opening. And then Bike and Pedestrian Advisory, the committee is looking for folks who, um, might not be avid riders, but have an interest in making sure that if they do ride, they're safe. So, um, we have a lot of avid bikers and walkers on there already, so if you're kind of one of those ones that's kind of in the middle and wants to learn more and really dig into it, um, they would appreciate that voice. So please apply for that on the city's website, and that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? Moved by Councilmember Fredericks.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Uh, moving on to our consent agenda, I have not received any items to be pulled from the consent agenda. Is that correct? Uh, therefore, I welcome a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
Move approval.
Motion made by Councilmember Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Doring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to our public hearings, we have three public hearings on our agenda this evening. Um, uh, before we begin, uh, just a moment to clarify the process for the public hearings. Uh, staff will first introduce, uh, the item and, uh, present on it. Then if there is an applicant or an applicant representative, uh, uh, associated with the item, they will have up to 10 minutes to discuss the item. At that time, I will open the public hearing. Members of the public have up to five minutes each to, uh, to discuss the item, and then I will close the public hearing, and the applicant has an opportunity to return to the podium with a rebuttal, uh, up to five minutes, and, uh, respond to any questions that may have come up during the public hearing, after which I will then turn it over to my colleagues to ask questions of, uh, either the applicant or staff or both. So with that, um, G1, Zone Change by INH Properties, and, uh, Taryn Edens is going to present this.
Good evening, members of the council, council president and mayor. Taryn Edens with the Community Development Department. Uh, the site before you is located northwest of the intersection of 7th Avenue Southwest and Center Street West. The request is to re-designate 1.2 acres of land from our zoning district of R2X, which is known for single-family small lots, to R3, which is, uh, medium-density residential to facilitate a multi-family infill development project. Uh, both zoning districts, the R2X and the R3, are compatible with the underlying land use, which is downtown neighborhood core. The uses allowed in the R3 zoning district are compatible with the existing uses in the area, nearby zoning districts, and underlying land uses. This area is considered a downtown gateway neighborhood per our consolidated plan. These neighborhoods are immediately adjacent to the downtown business area and consistent of a variety of housing and limited small-scale commercial and institutional uses. The project site is located within a quarter mile of the downtown business district and to a proposed Link Bus Rapid Transit Station. A higher-density housing project will support the city's goals of mode shift change and bolster the public transit system. If approved, any development project proposed on the site must adhere to the neighborhood protection standards. This includes a required 25-foot setback to the north and west, a level four buffer yard, a 50-foot setback to the north and west for any parking areas, and a 100-foot setback for height step-down. The step-down requirements apply on any portion of the building within 100 feet of a property within a housing, uh, that is near a housing unit with less than four units must not exceed the maximum height allowed in R2X zoning district. The neighborhood protection standards will create a reasonable buffer between properties while accommodating a higher-density infill development project. The applicant has demonstrated that an infill development is possible, given the required protection standards in the massing exhibit that they submitted. The planning commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval. The development review team recommends approval of the zone change. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Edens. Uh, is there a, um, uh, Representative, Mr. Twyton? Please step forward, and you have up to 10 minutes.
Thank you, President. Mr. Schubring, members of the council, Mayor Norton, I'm both talking with WCD Engineering. I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant who is requesting a zone change to the R3. Uh, staff report, uh, by Ms. Edens was very thorough. We planned to adhere to all of those conditions of neighborhood protection and everything else in the site design, but tonight is the first step, which is just a zone change. It doesn't give us any development rights. Uh, we will be doing the site plans, grading plans, utility plans, and plating come later. Several reasons to support the zone change is the community development recommended. The change is based on the criteria you have in pages 255 and 256 of your packet. Uh, it's also adjacent to and compatible with the land use designation, and we're close to the downtown gateway neighborhood. So this is an infill project, and we, uh, hope to come back here if you approve the zone change with our plating and so forth for your review. Any questions on the project?
We'll invite you up after the public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Twyton back up.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Uh, members of the council, questions? Councilmember Palmer.
I have a couple of questions, um, for zoning. Downtown Core, where is that all takes place? Can you give me a, is it on the east side, in the west side, in the north side of, of the downtown?
The intent is essentially to surround the downtown.
A block, two blocks, 10 blocks?
Looking to make sure we get this exactly right for you. One block, I believe.
One, one block from 7th Avenue?
Okay, answer that one. Ed Capable's Development. Um, I would say there isn't necessarily a, uh, you know, a, a number of blocks from the downtown core, but generally speaking, within a walkable distance from the downtown.
Okay, so, so if I can walk a mile, then that would be the downtown core?
I think generally speaking, the, a, a walkable would be considered .25 or a quarter of a mile.
So we're down to a quarter mile for the downtown core? And so if I'm heading north from the downtown core, would that take me into lower town?
I guess the traditional core neighborhood would go up to the lower town, which is what the land use classification is for this property.
Okay. And I'm just trying to understand this. So, so do we have a, a downtown core designation? Does it like run from 6th Avenue Southwest over to, over to 3rd Avenue? Or what is the boundary of our downtown?
Yeah, there is a downtown, um, core designation. Generally speaking, it's, uh, north of 4th Street, um, east of 1st Avenue Northwest, and then runs up to, um, essentially Civic Center Drive, and then east to the, uh, Mayo Civic Center.
Okay, so that'd be, okay, then.
Did you say the South?
4th Street.
Thanks.
The question was the South boundaries, 4th Street. Correct?
Correct, yep.
I was listening. Um, neighborhood protection, then, you look at that, and, and if I understand it right, we're 25. it right, we're 25-foot setback in the rear, 75 setback in the side, and then 100 feet from any parking? Did I hear that right?
Fifty, 50-foot setback to the north and west, 100-foot setback for height step-down, that's different. Your other question was right. Of 25-foot setback, excuse me, 25-foot setback to the north and west, a 50-foot setback to the north and west for any parking areas.
Okay. So if, if to the east of this is, is the church, Orthodox Church, correct?
Correct.
So this is just extending the commercial area down a little bit further. Would you consider this commercial, I mean, being an apartment building?
You would consider it mixed use.
Okay. And, and this is part of the R2X that we did six years ago, correct?
That's correct.
And if my memory serves me right, we've only had one other R2X in the six years?
Can you clarify that? One other R2X zone change?
Project, project that we've done on the R2X that fell in the R2X?
There's been more than one. I'd say there's been a handful, less than, for sure, less than five, but I can name a few off the top of my head.
I can name ones, 15th Avenue by St. Mary's. That's the one I can name, and we changed the zoning for that. Where's the other ones?
I can name another one. Just a name that comes to mind is 127 Fourplex is the, the name of the development application. And I believe there's another one that I'm missing.
Is that an application, or did we approve it already?
It's been approved. It's been built.
Okay. Is there a reason that this area just isn't zoned R3 and R4 all the way through?
I'll, I'll take that one. Generally, we're taking a look at the underlying land use as described, right? So we were intentional about choosing R2X for this area. If you were to look at the zoning districts surrounding this, you would notice a more dense zoning district to the east and a bit more to the south. So generally would say, as mentioned, R2X and R3 both meet the, the land use classification that lies beneath this. So intentionally, I would say either one works, and we're looking for alignment with our land use designation versus intentionally rezoning all of it.
But the land, land use is the downtown core, and that is going to run a quarter mile down the road from the Orthodox Church?
The land use is downtown neighborhood Core.
Okay.
But the location described is correct.
Okay. And I think you and I have discussed before, in that area, this is my last thing here. I'm getting my numbers wrong, I think. No, there they are. In the Cusco Park neighborhood, we got 420 total parcels from 7th Avenue to 11th Avenue, north of 2nd Street to the river. Of that, 762 of them are rental.
That's true.
Doesn't that really just make it kind of commercial area, and it should just all be R3?
That wouldn't be our rationale for rezoning, would be based on residential tenure. Wouldn't necessarily be a reason to rezon in our opinion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Keen.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm usually looking at when, my training is if you're looking at a zone change, you don't just look at the project that you're being told. You look at anything that could go in there. But in this case, I was surprised in the narrative to find some references, both to the case and not. And one thing is, I, I guess I'm trying to understand, if we grant this tonight, is there anything that's built there right now that would automatically be like out of zoning, would be considered unable to live in that, in an R, in a new R3 zoning, and would have to, if it ever changed, it would have to change into a different design, the way it would happen with if something moves, if there's a home in that's an R1, and then it, it gets rezoned to R2X, the next product, project has to conform with R2X. But I don't see any differences between R2X and R3.
Right. The, the uses that are permitted in R2X would also be permitted in R3. That answers your question.
So yeah, I guess I, I'm trying to ask in such a way that there's nothing that exists there right now that was built at, probably as R1. But, but I think the key is that it would have been R2, it would, it would, there would be no changes.
Right. That's correct, because it would have been permissible on R2X, so therefore would continue to be permissible, either as is our legal law conforming in R3.
Okay. And then, we just went through a review of the, of zoning and land use, and we didn't recommend these sort of changes. I think it does go to Councilmember Palmer's questions like of, why did we not consider that, and why would we consider this right now? And, and why is it that we don't then, when a specific parcels are asking for it, that we look broader?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. And generally, when we're taking a look at this with our comprehensive plan update and looking at land use changes, we are trying to look at it area-wide, in places where we've received inquiries and places that makes sense. So when we're considering a zone change, we recognize it will carry forward, and it should apply for the area as a whole. We were intentional about zoning this to R2X. We think what makes this lot sort of unique, as mentioned, is the location to higher-density zoning districts across the street and right next to it, and the unique land use, once again, that permits both. So to, to answer your question, right, we want to make sure we feel confident about this when we're getting the zone change, and we believe it complies with the underlying land use. But we're not necessarily always looking down to each miniscule parcel when we're looking at the comprehensive plan update and looking at every possible land use.
Okay. And then, just being, I mean, there's some other things in there about the, the planned project, and if it's really viable in this case. I don't think we need to get into that with a zone change, and everything I see would be that I feel confident I can support this tonight.
Is there a motion on this item?
Make a motion for a zone change, CD 2025-007ZC by INH Properties, approving zone change number CD 2025-007ZC by INH Properties, rezon approximately 1.2 acres of land from RX, low-density residential infill, to R3, medium-density residential, and directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading.
Motion made by Councilmember Fredericks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Miller. Any further discussion? Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, I, I think that, for one, this has been a good level of engagement with the Neighborhood Association. There's been good clarification to neighbors about the proposed change here, and I appreciate Ms. Edens and Mr. Caples clarifying the uses have overlapping their, opportunity there for the underlying land use, and also clarifying the neighborhood protection standards, because that was a concern that I heard, was about the heights. And I think that, so once again, showing how the UDC is working to allow development, incremental development, change in the neighborhoods without drastically changing the scale. And I, that was a good learning opportunity for me, and I think the neighbors were also realizing that right across the street from these properties is an existing small-scale apartment building that fits well into the character of the neighborhood. So while we're not talking about the specific project, I feel reassured that the UDC is working as intended here and provides protection for how a potential project fits into these parcels, should they be subdivided. So I plan to support this tonight.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next up, we have G2, which is a zone change by Sunshine Behavioral Health Group LLC, and Mr. Desmond McGill will present this.
Thank you, Council President Schubring, Mayor Norton, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Desmond McGill. I'm with the Community Development Department. I'll be bringing, introducing you to this application. The applicant is requesting a change of zone on a 2.7-acre property from light industrial to mixed-use general. This is located in the Wood Lake Business Center, generally at the southeast corner of the interchange of Highway 52 with Highway 63. The site presently has a 20,000-square-foot hotel with 103 rooms. That was built in 2000. There is, the applicant is requesting this change so they can facilitate a conversion of the hotel to a substance abuse rehabilitation home, which is permitted in the MXG zone, but not in the current light industrial zoning district. There are little expected changes to occur on the exterior of this site. There's many, a wide variety of uses in this center, including trade shops, hotels, wholesale suppliers, medical offices, restaurants, and other community services and facilities. Both the existing and proposed zoning districts do meet and are found to be suitable under the commercial and business development land use category. Finding, supporting the zone change to MXG can be found on page four through six of the staff report. In summary, staff and the planning commission has found that this meets the zoning criteria, finding that it is appropriate and compatible with the surrounding community, would not be considered spot zoning, and the district lines better with the goals of the comprehensive plan by addressing reactivation of the subject property through the adaptive reuse of the existing facility. See, planning commission and staff is recommending approval of this application. And planning commission did approve it, or recommended approval unanimously a-doh. And that concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. Is there a representative of the, the applicant here? Please step forward. State your name, and you have up to 10 minutes to discuss the item.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for hosting me tonight. I'm Brandon Turner, the Chief Financial Officer of Sunshine Behavioral Health Group. Sunshine Behavioral Health Group is a private-for-profit healthcare company. We provide substance use disorder treatment and mental health treatment to clients across the country. We have seven programs in the United States with over 600 beds. This morning, we had 400 clients that are under our care. We serve adults 18 to 64, both men and women. Our clients come to us voluntarily, and they often pay for their services either through insurance or by themselves. We have converted hotels across the country into this use, and have had success serving the, the community and serving our shareholders. So with that, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, and we'll invite you back up after the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and offer Mr. Turner the opportunity to make any closing comments that he may have. And I'll turn it over to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember Fredericks.
Just a comment. Mr. Turner, I want to thank you for providing a service much needed in every community. Thank you for coming to Rochester and making this happen.
Councilmember Palmer.
I have a couple of questions. Since this is a zoning change, that'd probably be helpful, wouldn't it? Thank you. If, since this is a zoning change, why are we talking about a client?
Well, they are the, they're the applicant for this, for this proposed rezoning, and this is what they do. You don't have to take the future use of this specifically as substance abuse center as part of your deliberations or consideration to the zone change. But it is just, you know, information that's helpful to know.
But haven't we told in the past not to take what was actually proposed and, and look at the overall zoning, what can actually be there once it's zoned to MXG?
Yeah, I mean, most of the uses permitted in MXG are almost identical to light industrial zoning district. There's just a few uses, such as group living quarters, that are not permitted in the light industrial zoning district, which this falls under. So as far as any additional uses that they wouldn't be able to do, there's not very, there isn't very many things that they could do in the MXG that they aren't already allowed to do in the MX, or in the light industrial zoning district.
But, but right now, we're currently short on industrial land. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I believe we are short on industrial land.
I mean, that's one of our goals, is to have more industrial land?
Yes.
Okay. And, and what would be the reason that you wouldn't want to have a group home in an industrial park?
I think if there was heavy industrial uses nearby or as part of that park, that would probably be a concern to staff as well. But as we look at this particular use that's there now, it accommodates overnight lodging, and, and it exists within a light industrial business park just fine. And this really isn't much of a difference in terms of how they want to use this property.
And there's no conflict with the school right next door?
Not that I'm aware of.
So the school could be in a light industrial area also, obviously?
Yes. Oh, absolutely, yes, because it's a specialty school. It's, 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 it's not, it's an alternative school.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Is there a motion on this item?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
For zone change number CD 2025- I forgot my reading glasses. I'm struggling here. All right, CD 2025-008ZC by Sunshine Behavioral Health Group LLC, approving zone change number, zone change number, zone change number. I guess that's maybe a typo.
Approving the zoning designation on 2.71-acre site.
There we go.
Perfect.
Continue. Get the rest?
Mine reads differently. Okay, I got it. By Sunshine Behavioral Health Group LLC, amending the zoning designation of a 2.71-acre site from LI, light industrial, to MXG, mixed-use general, and directing the city attorney to prepare the ordinance for first reading.
Motion made by Councilmember Fredericks with a little assistance.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes six to one with Councilmember Palmer voting nay. Next up is G3, which is a final plat by West 34 Partners LLC, to be known as Badger Heights 2nd. And Mr. Ed Caples.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor Norton, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Ed Caples, and I'll be introducing CD 2026-002 plat. The proposed final plat is located northeast of the intersection of 50th Avenue Northwest and Valley High Road Northwest. The request is to subdivide outlots A and B of the previously subdivided Badger Heights to create 32 residential lots. The final plat is consistent with the previously approved general development plan and major land subdivision. The development review team recommends approval with five conditions, as outlined in the staff report. The applicant has indicated that they are not able to attend tonight's meeting, but have expressed to staff that they are in agreement with the proposed conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caples. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and invite my colleagues for any questions they may have of staff. Seeing none, is there a motion for, a motion on this item?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the final plat, CD 2026-002PLAT by West 34 Partners LLC, to be known as Badger Heights 2nd, with five conditions for the subdivision of 8.5 acres of land into 32 residential lots.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Keen, seconded by Councilmember Wall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Moving on, we have, moving on to reports and recommendations, we have no reports and recommendations. Moving on to council-initiated actions, we have one.
Council President, can I move that we take our recommended break before we discuss?
We will take a five-minute break at this point and return at, in five minutes. We're going, welcome back. We're going to continue with our item I, which is council-initiated actions. We have one council-initiated action, which is reaffirming Rochester as a compassionate city. Before I turn it over to Councilmember Doring to present the issue, I just wanted to make everyone aware, as noted in our RCA, that we have an opportunity to introduce two separate motions under this CIA. One regarding the compassionate city resolution and a potential second motion, or as it says in the packet, alternative action to consider it providing support or input through a friend of the court brief as a part of the federal litigation filed by the state of Minnesota and the cities of Minneapolis and Rochester against various federal agencies. This is an issue that we can take in addition to the resolution, not necessarily as an alternative. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Doring to present the item.
Yeah, as you see before you, colleagues, we have this action requested to consider adopting a resolution affirming Rochester as a compassionate city. Rochester is a compassionate city. That, that statement has been in existence for a number of years, and you had heard from members of the community earlier that folks are scared, folks are worried about what the future might hold. Our economics are, are suffering. Our school attendance is suffering. I brought forth this resolution to let our community know that we hear them, to let them know that we care, to reaffirm the practices of the Rochester Police Department, their longstanding policy about immigration enforcement, the ways that they, that our community can expect RPD to show up. I understand that people want more. We heard that clearly this evening. Quite frankly, I want more. I want this version of ICE and Customs and Border Patrol to leave our city. I've said that on numerous occasions from this diocese, and that exists. I'm a boots-on-the-ground kind of leader. I spend a lot of time working with the most vulnerable in this city, talking with them, providing food for them, sitting in their suffering in fear with them. We need to do something so that they know that they have our support. So I'm asking you to consider voting in favor of this resolution and whatever else might come up in this conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Doring. Other council members that wish to be heard on this item? Council, Councilmember Miller.
I guess a point of clarification to our agenda process with this action. Council President, you offered two actions that we might take in this process. Do you also anticipate that we would have opportunities in other business to discuss beyond the scope of this action?
I think we, yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I'd be remiss not to say that any either of these motions can be amended in any way that members of the council wish to amend them, so.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I would just add, I agree with Councilmember Doring. I'm in favor of taking both of these actions. I think we've heard clearly from the community that they're looking for action and communication and leadership from us, and I do want more than what's here. But I think for this portion of our agenda, I plan to support both of these and would very much be in favor of us looking for opportunities through the legal process to show that harms are being done in Rochester and that we are not different from Minneapolis and St. Paul in the harms that we are being subject to by the current iteration of ICE, Customs and Border Patrol presence through Operation Metro Surge.
Councilmember Wall.
I will be able to support this resolution because it breaks no new ground. Instead, it affirms our current policy and our strong support for the Rochester Police Department and RPD's continued commitment to serving our community and providing public safety. In fact, voting against the resolution would be voting against those things that we have already established as productive policy for our city. That said, since the resolution breaks no new ground, I find it unfortunate that the resolution comes to a vote before this council. While it may provide assurance to people in our community, it is also a flashpoint for others in the community. I worry this resolution will only deepen disunity rather than draw us together. And if we don't believe that from what we have heard tonight, just look at the social media tomorrow and look at more than 1,000 comments on a particular article in the Post Bulletin. It has already been misinterpreted by many in the community. The resolution has caused anguished emails and telephone calls on both sides of the issue. I would like to entrust our public safety to those officers who serve here full-time and are committed to this community. I would like federal officers to leave our city and trust those whom we pay with our local tax dollars to enforce our laws. I would like our residents to be able to go back to a sense of security and safety as they go to work, to school, to church, to shop. I wish a resolution could do this, it cannot. Instead, it is people caring for one another, caring for a neighbor, caring for a classmate that will ultimately prevail.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, thank you. I think many of my peers and staff know that I dislike doing city business through council-initiated actions. I always find it is a method of basically taking us off our normal standard operating procedures at staff, but also changing, taking resources away from our strategic goals and strategic initiatives. But I also know we're going to have some unique circumstances in our streets to be addressed, and we are just reaffirming commitments. But I think we are also, as best we can, we are trying to stand with our residents who both feel targeted and feel unprotected, but I'm going to say that are targeted and are unprotected. This is not a brave new strategy. It's not, it is really just a timely restatement of our commitments. But I, I think it is also a signal to city staff and to our residents that this council is willing to meet the moment with improved methods and tactics. So with that in mind, I would support this, but clarification, has there been a motion made yet?
There has not. Councilmember Keen?
I think Councilmember Doring was going to make.
Councilmember Fredericks, we have, we have two, two more council members that wish to speak before the motion.
Okay.
So we're going to go to that. Councilmember Fredericks.
Me personally, I'm just going to kind of speak from the heart. I've been faced with a lot of confusion exactly what our federal agents are exactly doing in our community. I just feel like there's been a lack of collaboration with local entities, local law enforcement, local government. It's just been, to me, been mass confusion. What exactly are they, and what exactly is their target? What exactly is going on? A lot of hearsay, a lot of news, a lot of social media. I'm on zero social media, okay? So I just hear a lot of stuff from people I trust, and it's just, to me, mass confusion. Here's what I do know. I have witnessed our, our police department way too much handle issues that are very difficult with utmost professionalism. I watched them go through the skyways early in the morning before anybody's up and about and deal with our homeless issues that we have going on in this community. I witnessed them call the people by first name, treat them with dignity, help them. I was so impressed. They knew everybody by name. I was like, I, I, I barely know those city staff all by name at this point of year in. I do, I, obviously, I do now, but the point is, and then I've also watched them deal with, my wife has had several incidents with dangerous people, and I still watch them treat these people with dignity, care, way beyond what I would even call professional. So I trust our local police to handle our decisions on a local level and to do the right thing. I firmly believe there needs to be more collaboration with whatever the heck is going on at the federal level, the mass chaos that we're seeing. There needs to be some collaboration with local governments, and there needs to be some cooperation.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for some staff. City Attorney, can the city of Rochester tell the federal government that they can't wear masks when they're in Rochester?
We could make that suggestion, Councilmember Palmer, councilmembers, mayor. It is quite clear that federal authorities would not need to follow that directive as part of operational matters.
So, so the federal government doesn't have to listen to the city, is that correct?
Within reason, yes.
Okay. IDs, making the, the ICE officers were IDs, can, can the city of Rochester require them to do that?
Well, here, here would be my hesitation to start wading into some of these topics. They are, I believe, topics of significant discussion, may well be topics of whatever deals may be of consideration. These, these are issues that matter to local authorities and to our community, and so I think many would prefer to not frame it up as simply a question of authority and power, but what may be best practices on the street. So that topic included, I would say it's an ongoing discussion.
But we have control over our officers, and our officers don't wear masks. Our officers wear cameras, our officers have a badge. Is, that's what we have control over, is that not correct?
That's true.
Okay. And our officers don't do anything with immigration, because you can't write a ticket on immigration yourself as the city attorney?
That's true.
Okay. Chief Franklin, you sent out an email today about an incident that happened that's been talked about. Can you briefly tell me what happened in that incident from your research?
I think one of the challenges that we're facing, sir, is, is trying to keep up with the information, as Councilmember Fredericks said, out there. I did provide a briefing today for, for council in reference to the arrest at the LEC Government Center here. Because I was asked so many different questions by community members in an attempt to, quite frankly, offer some transparency and information, which I had none, we reached out to ICE and asked them what happened on this incident. It was reported back to us that they did conduct a traffic stop on a vehicle in the LEC parking lot. It's my understanding that ICE is allowed to do traffic stops if they have the reasonable suspicion to believe that the person inside the vehicle has a warrant, which in this case, they claimed they did. Upon conducting that traffic stop, we were told that the individual in the vehicle had a mask on and failed to identify himself or cooperate. He was temporarily detained until he was identified and then released. That's what we were told, and that's what I reported back to this council in hopes of providing information or light on what happened.
I appreciate that. I didn't say anything at our last meeting on the last Wednesday, and I talked with my daughter, and we have a good relationship, and she understands the city quite well. And, and I'm watching and discussing what is, discussing what's happened in Minneapolis and listening to the Rochester residents. And at first, I thought the best strategy was to keep the attention on the cities, not call attention to our city. And then my daughter reminded me that I'm not one to avoid conflict. It's clear that we feel several things at once, fear, panic, worry, and concern. It's moments like these that people look to their leaders for guidance. And I taught and supervised lifeguards for many years. One of the key lessons from that training is to take a deep breath and don't panic. And I don't have the answers, and I don't claim to, and there's no one comforting statement that's going to make this better. The thing that we can do as leaders is focus on what's best for Rochester, and that's what citizens elected me to do. I have a unique experience when I first came to Rochester in 1989 as a housing inspector. We had a lot of Southeast Asian immigrants, and you'd go to their apartments, and they didn't speak English well. They had distrust of government officials. And our police officers, our police department, our city council requires our people to treat everybody with respect. And when outsiders come here and don't treat people with respect, it's very upsetting. But I always made sure that I treated everybody humanely, like I would want to be treated when I was doing housing inspections. And I, the fear in people's eyes and their feelings were real. And what we heard tonight was fear and, and very real. So I will support this tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Doring bringing this to our attention.
Mayor Norton. I, I think it's important to, as I think some of our friends in the audience have pointed out, to acknowledge that this is unprecedented and tenuous times, and a lot is expected of us as a city and each other. There are a lot of unanswered questions, more questions than answers. I do believe that it, in these times, being as transparent and over-communicating is important. I also recognize that that is sometimes...
I also recognize that that is sometimes counterintuitive to the ethic of confidentiality and discretion that is necessary element of public safety, but I think we need to have this communication, similar communication that Chief Franklin gave us today. I do know that we are having weekly meetings with the chief on situations and incidents as they happen, and they're happening in real time. So we're looking at building this as it's happening, unprecedented times, but also thinking of the long term. And I do think that it is important to name what's happening here. We have federal police roaming our streets using abhorrent tactics that we all, including our Rochester Police Department, find appalling. And the most important thing for this community and the city as a whole and our police department is to ensure the safety of our residents. And so I think this is tough, it hurts, it hurts families, it hurts neighbors directly. We have to stick to our values as a community, our principles of respect, neighborliness, and ensure that we stick together and work on this as it's happening in real time here, and stick together as a strong community. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution reaffirming Rochester as a compassionate city.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Councilmember Doring, seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass unanimously. Moving on, is there a further motion? Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, yes. Again, in preparation for this and through the narrative that we presented, I also wanted to make a motion tied to these actions, and I've presented it to the clerk. But the motion is to direct the city attorney to coordinate amicus participation with a focus on documenting local impacts to the immigration enforcement actions. Any such amicus brief or other forms of support would be submitted at the next available opportunity in current or future federal cases addressing constitutional and/or jurisdiction authorities within the state of Minnesota.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Keen, seconded by Councilmember Miller. Councilmember Keen.
Thank you, yeah. So I make this motion, as I've stated before, that I believe our real relief for what's going on in Minnesota will come through the courts. Court cases and references to constitutional authority are surely not straightforward and will not resolve quickly. They ask, they take into account how big the case is, and there's these standards that are very difficult for normal laymen like me to understand. So this will take time. I'll share, I was in Chicago this weekend because I have an ailing relative, but I was also celebrating births and some birthdays, and I'm honored that I can do that, just take off on it for a weekend in Chicago. But as you can guess, I was fielding questions at every venue about how are things in Minnesota and the ICE protests. And they ask, I mean, almost every place, how far are you from Minneapolis? Do you know anyone who's protesting? How often do you get to Minneapolis? And they were all kind of shocked when I said, no, 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 this isn't Minneapolis. This is in the streets of Rochester, and that just isn't getting out. And I'm a little bit bothered in the state of Minnesota, there's a bunch of people says, that's Minneapolis, that's not our concern, and that's just not true. And I think a place like Rochester, and knowing what's going on in Austin or St. Peter, Minnesota, changes the narrative for some people. Having Rochester data in support of federal lawsuits helps explain to the courts and to the country that this is bigger than just an urban problem with overactive protesters. It is happening everywhere in Minnesota, and if it can happen here, I want people to think, what would happen when it comes to me? And I think that's what, one of my main goals is, we're trying to get us involved in this. The motion approved would give authority to the city attorney's office to apply judgment on when exactly and what exactly would be helpful and when, after extensive interactions with the attorney's office and with city administration. I'm comfortable with that direction is reasonably scoped. It isn't something that we have to read the words and make sure it's being done right. We have these discussions, we go back and forth. I think the staff is always trying to divine what the council wants and what the community wants, and I think we've done a good job with that, and therefore, I trust just having this motion is good enough for getting us forward.
Yeah. Councilmember Miller.
I'll just add, I appreciate Councilmember Keen bringing this and also making these points that clearly this is not just a Minneapolis and St. Paul metro area impact. I personally was taking my daughter to a music lesson yesterday, and her teacher said, hey, can I talk to you about something that's not related to her lesson? And she told me about legal neighbors of hers being harassed, the neighborhood setting up a neighborhood watch to protect them, but this family unable to live on their own street despite their legal protected status in the United States and Rochester. And I also am in support of this motion because when I look at the current filings, I see that other cities have already filed amicus briefs. Those include Golden Valley, Moundsview, Lauderdale, Richfield, St. Louis Park, perhaps others, have since taken action. And I think it is an opportunity of ours as a city of the first class to be clear in our position that harms are happening here, and again, to move it out of the council cadence of every two weeks of us being able to make a decision, but to be clear in our intentions and to give our city attorney and his office and other staff the opportunity to have a clear direction from us, but to not wait for us. So I plan to support this, and I appreciate all of the work that's gone into bringing this motion.
Councilmember Palmer.
Mr. City Attorney, I've got a couple of questions for you. About a week ago, your advice was that we not join this brief, is that correct?
Councilmember Palmer, councilmembers, Mayor Norton, I would say my message was more nuanced, and it was also at the preliminary stages of some additional conversation and interest that was evolving by the council. I would say at that point of discussion, there was not only a question of an amicus brief option, but also kind of a question of how can we join the lawsuit, right? Which is a more significant commitment and question. What you've discussed so far is not joining the lawsuit as an intervenor. You're talking about filing, as you referenced, a friend of the court brief, an amicus brief. You've heard some of the indications of focusing on the local impact, that would be a focus of any amicus effort. I think that part of my reflection at the time as well, when I briefed the council on this topic, was that just procedurally, the case was going before the judge for a temporary restraining order. So there was a bit of a belief that that window of opportunity to weigh in through an amicus was closing, but also recognizing now that there will be additional opportunities to weigh in as that case moves forward. So I certainly recognize that at the end of the day, it is a decision for the council. I'm not in a position at this point to give you particularly clear guidance on the pros or the cons, or exactly what it would mean to the actual litigation versus what it may mean to the community. But to try to answer your question a little bit more deliberately, I think that was preliminary conversation, and we're at a point where the council can give that direction if you think that that has value.
But you're our legal counsel, you work for the city council. Hasn't the case been dismissed?
It has not been, no.
Where is it in the legal?
Sure. Since the publication of the agenda, and since the republication of the agenda on Friday, there's additional developments that I shared with some of you today. First of all, I would just reflect on, as you know, how quickly some of these litigation matters are moving, really unprecedented in many respects. So on the weekend, there was an order from the federal judge, Judge Menendez, on that initial question of a temporary restraining order. She made that preliminary ruling that was not in favor of the restraining order being granted. That's not the end of the case. There are a few different paths that the case may go at this point, including ranging from an appeal to the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, to refocusing on a potential trial or essentially an evidentiary hearing that may occur at some point in the future. Ultimately, it will be the named plaintiffs, the state of Minnesota, city of Minneapolis, city of St. Paul, that will make those decisions together on what that next path is. And depending on the path, that may open up essentially a next window, an opportunity for cities, municipalities, organizations, friends of the court, to weigh in through some additional amicus briefing or impact statements.
But the state attorney general has prosecuted, or he's bringing this case to the feds, is that not correct?
That is, it is correct that the attorney general's office represents the state of Minnesota.
But that would be all of us, that's the whole state.
It is, it is true that the suit brought in the name of the state of Minnesota does essentially cover all of the state of Minnesota.
And there's roughly 850 cities in the state of Minnesota. I think Keen named six of them, I think, are suburbs, so a small percentage want to join this lawsuit.
Can I just give a slight distinction on that?
Eight hundred and fifty cities?
No, just the point that I would encourage you to make some distinction between joining the lawsuit as some type of named intervenor, becoming another plaintiff in the case, versus the many, many amicus briefs that have been filed, I think at last count, prior to, well, the last that I had looked, there were around 120 filings from really all across the country and a mix of organizations, and I did not attempt to try to identify how many cities in the state of Minnesota have weighed in in some manner.
Okay. The reason I'm asking these questions is that this is a CIA, that I didn't have any information ahead of time, I haven't read it, it's hard for me to read it. So the question then becomes, timing wise, how much time is your office going to be putting on this? And then the cost of this, and can't, if a business or a person's been affected by this, if our state attorney is representing the state, which is us, can't they send their information to the state and have that included? So there's three questions there.
I'll just try to answer the last one because that's the only one that I remember as a question. I would say there are a mix of avenues to try to provide information and a sense of impact, local impacts, to the state. One of those is a link that we have on our city website, which is an opportunity to document incidents that occur in the city. That's available to individuals to try to tell their story and for the attorney general's office to try to have a sense of the incidents of concern that are occurring throughout the state. That is an opportunity to weigh in. Exactly how the attorney general's office or state of Minnesota as a plaintiff will utilize that information in support of this lawsuit or for anything else is unclear to us, so just not sure. I do think it's fair to say that, to the extent that I think I understood and appreciated the motion from Councilmember Keen with a focus on community impacts, there's been a lot of internal conversation by city teammates throughout the past few weeks of trying to understand and document in, to some extent, summary fashion, but in as much level of detail as we think is appropriate, the true community impacts, not just for the city organization, but all of the things that you heard about this evening, the impact to the schools, to our medical institutions, to our local economy and small businesses. The opportunity to document that in a much more holistic manner through an amicus brief, through a declaration, is kind of the technical term of what's being attached to these amicus briefs, is certainly more robust than what the state by themselves would be doing.
So the first two questions, you just explained a lot of stuff there, so I'm assuming, what is your estimate for time of our city attorney's office and then the cost of us doing this
Well, what I provided you this afternoon, there is one path of us getting this amicus brief done, and that has been an opportunity to do a consolidated effort with a few other cities that we know are currently contemplating this option. Their councils have already approved moving forward with an amicus brief effort through a firm that we regularly work with in the metro, Kennedy and Graven. One of their attorneys is coordinating that effort. That's a clear option for us and maybe a most consolidated, streamlined, efficient way for us to engage. That effort is estimated at a $10,000 to $15,000 commitment to get that amicus brief filed. It's really kind of a one submission and done largely. So it would be that joint amicus brief and a declaration that really is more specific to Rochester and the community impacts we're seeing here.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. I share many of Mr. Keen's feelings about the tactics, the fear, the real damage that's being done in our city. With that, I still have grave reservations about supporting this particular motion. Prior to the November 2024 election, on June 24, 2024, our mayor and two county commissioners, all of whom previously held statewide legislative offices, warned of the dangers of partisan politics entering into our city and county governments. All three lifted up a commitment to nonpartisan government, pointing to the need to represent all residents regardless of party affiliation. If the Rochester City Council takes any position supporting the suit that the state of Minnesota, Minneapolis, and St. Paul have filed against the federal government, in my view, we will have crossed that line. I have read the 80-page suit, and it understandably reads as a partisan document, since entities of the DFL are suing a Republican federal agency. The document leaves no question as to its partisanship. Paragraph 272 from the lawsuit, the state's voters elected a Democratic governor, indeed Minnesota's voters elected Democrats to all of Minnesota's statewide offices. Additionally, plaintiff cities are widely considered to be Democratic cities with elected leaders who identify as Democrats. The state's governor and plaintiff city's elected leaders are vocally opposed to the Trump administration's agenda and have repeatedly criticized the president and his administration on behalf of their constituents. This political speech is constitutionally protected activity. Paragraph 210 from the lawsuit, as set forth above, defendants have targeted Minnesota for disparate treatment relative to other states based not on any real or legitimate concern for public safety or fraud. Rather, defendants have repeatedly made statements that reflect their true intent to punish Minnesota's elected officials and residents for their perceived political leanings, to target so-called sanctuary jurisdictions, to create false political narratives of lawlessness in Minnesota, and to incite flashpoints between Minnesota residents and immigration agents. While these are two representative paragraphs, the tenor of partisanship is present through the entire 80-page document. Rochester is not mentioned in the document. It's focused almost entirely on Minneapolis and St. Paul. Rochester's potential participation in the suit will not make our city safer. It is the Rochester Police Department who serve our public safety. With most people... With most people, sadly not all people, I am appalled at what is happening around our country, in Minneapolis, in St. Paul, and in Rochester. We are not being well-served by federal enforcement tactics that have largely failed the public good. Every day, I hope and pray that the previous day was the last day that federal officers would wreak havoc in our community. But we cannot delve into partisan politics. In the same way that I will not support any action to participate in this suit, I would not sign or support a partisan statement from the Department of Homeland Security. As a nonpartisan body, we cannot and should not join in a DFL or a Republican lawsuit, and I urge our council to remain nonpartisan.
Councilmember Doring.
I plan to support this action, but I have a logistical question for you, city attorney. In preparing this brief, how can residents feel like their voice is being heard in the construction of it? Is there a mechanism that exists that they can report grievances to you for possible inclusion in a brief? That's a big question, I know.
It is indeed, Councilmember Doring. Councilmembers, I, it would be, it would be challenging in any particularly direct way. But what I would certainly say, and I think the commitment that the city organization and city teammates make to the community and to this council is that we try to continue to find a variety of ways for community members to be heard. And certainly, the efforts of my office and the efforts that would go towards any legal action if approved by, by this body would be informed by, by that input. We will continue to build out as best we can that community resources website through, through the city. It continues to grow day by day. As you maybe in particular know, know well, it can be difficult for us to set up any kind of specific process through the city organization for people to, to relate to us individual or specific situations of concern, partly because we're responsible for public data. We create public data that can create a concern for individuals, of course. But attempting to connect people to valuable resources will, will continue to be our goal and otherwise finding forums where they can share their stories in, in ways that they can also feel safe with.
So I want to make sure I understood what you said, just so I can feel better, right? So first, we will continue to build out our immigration resource site to inform the community of, of their rights, how the city is responding, all that kind of stuff. But then I also just heard a commitment to create some sort of forum where a listening can happen to members of the, from members of the community by city staff. Did I hear that correctly?
You heard that correctly, but, but I, and I would also just be careful about the commitments that, that I'm making on, on behalf of a bunch of other people doing, doing this work. Being intentional and thoughtful about trying to create those forums. That is a, a larger task than, than the attorney's department. Absolutely, I think those, those conversations should continue. If we can create opportunities, those, those efforts should be made. I, I would also just reference, I, I think, another specific point. I think there is some hope that at some point we may be able to access some of the Attorney General's information that is being consolidated. Again, that of course has its own potential flaws to it, but to the extent that we can access any of that information would be, would be helpful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fredericks.
All right. You know, we sit downstream from federal and state laws and rules, and we're, we're stuck dealing within that field of play, so to speak. I see this vote as a polarizing vote. I don't like it. I ran for Ward 4 City Council to serve our community in a nonpartisan position. Mr. Spindler-Craze, you stated that there's much we do not know right now earlier when you were talking to Councilmember Palmer. Would it be advisable to wait to move on this issue till we have more answers to avoid moving without facts?
Thank you, Councilmember Fredericks. I think you're framing a, a perfectly fair and, and good question. And I would also guess that, that is perhaps the reason that Councilmember Keen framed the motion the way that he did. He's, by my understanding, not attempting to commit to a particular lawsuit or a particular window and recognizes that we're in just a very quickly evolving scene, both on the streets and from a legal perspective. The motion by Councilmember Keen, I, I would just admit to you plainly, gives, gives me pause only because of the weight of responsibility that it puts on, on my department. But I also understand the reason that attempting to move this ongoing conversation away from the political body to staff could make sense. Now, of course, our decisions would need to be guided by understanding your foundational principles and have those intimately inform the direction that, that we would go. I think what we've learned over the last two to three weeks, feels like a really long time already, is that things are just continuing to shift so quickly. I don't know that we're going to get to a point where we feel like we know the facts, like things have settled down and we have a static picture and can make a really informed decision now. It just has been moving so quickly that to some extent, having the flexibility to move forward without having the every-two-week conversation with, with the body, that there's certainly an advantage to that. Here's otherwise the commitment that I would make to you if you move forward with this motion tonight. It does not mean that I would not come back to you for some additional input or potentially another hard decision for you. If, if what is presented to me feels like a legal action that I think has to come back before this body, I would do that. There are some lanes for closed-session discussion on this topic, but those lanes are pretty, pretty limited. So I can't necessarily pull you all into a room and talk it through in a safe space. Open meeting law is, is pretty, pretty narrow there. So I don't know that more time necessarily gets us to a clearer space of clearer facts or that litigation matters have coalesced in a particular direction.
Chief Franklin. Are you still feeling any safety calls? People that are just questioning, overall, they're scared? Any calls like this that you're getting, are you responding to those?
We're responding to, yes, yeah, we are responding to citizen complaints, concerns. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I just asked my team to start taking apart the data and looking into exactly how many of those calls for service so that we can have a, a true kind of data analysis, preliminary information. Just off the back of the napkin, I'm sorry, I don't have the data in front of me. But I think we responded to 18 calls in the last seven or eight, nine days. So it wasn't as many as, that I, I thought.
Okay, so with these 18 calls, how many of you showed up at, and there's, and there's confirmed ICE activity?
I'd have to break that down again, we're still taking apart the numbers. I don't, I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay.
Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what Mr. Wall said, and I think his statement was well researched, and, and I do support that statement. What I don't like about this, doing this on the fly, and, and Mr. Keen's been horribly hated, every one of the CIAs are changed at all. And so, you know, for me, people have not had a chance to read the motion. We have not had a chance to read the motion. People have not had time to comment on the motion. There's no idea on the cost or the time of it. So saying that, I'm going to make a motion to delay this action right now.
A, a motion to delay this action by Councilmember Palmer, is there a second? Fails by no second.
Okay.
I, I will support this motion. I think there has been a lot of discussion about the amicus brief. I think we also did hear about the potential costs. Also, we do know that over 50 other cities across the country, small, large, have supported the current litigation. Just last week, the cities of Mankato and West St. Paul passed measures similar to the measure that we're considering tonight. They will work with their attorneys to build that case, build that case for the impact here in our community as they are in their community. And that impact, as we've heard, is, is the economic impact, how it is impacting stores, storefronts, food carts, access to healthcare, people that are afraid to go to work, people that aren't going to school. We just heard this morning from RPS that 50 students are calling in, not able to go to school. So these impacts need to be identified for this community. And we are also a statewide community. And Minneapolis, as Councilmember Keen said, is not that far away. And I used to live on Nicolette Avenue, less than 10 blocks from where Alex Pretty was killed. I went to the restaurant that, Pimento, a great Japanese, Japanese, I'm sorry, Jamaican restaurant on each street, across the street from the Black Forest Inn. So this is the economic impact on one of our other Minneapolis cities. And I think it's only right that we have the impact that we're seeing here in Rochester as a part of that friend of the court case. So with that, I will ask Clerk Rena to call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Nay.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Nay.
Councilmember Palmer.
Nay.
Councilmember Doring.
Aye.
Council President Schubring.
Aye.
Passes 4-3.
Thank you, we will move on to our, our ordinance second readings. Go ahead, City Attorney Michael Spindler-Craze.
Thank you, sir. Item K1, an ordinance designating Central Park a historic landmark site and amending the official zoning map as referenced in 60200.020 per N.A. of the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Keen, seconded by Councilmember Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Moving on to other business, at this time, I will ask for a motion to recess to our Economic Development Authority, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Point of order, Councilmember Keen.
Were we doing other business prior to going into the economic development or after? It's just a question.
We will do other business after, other business. Our Rochester Economic Development Authority meeting, M1, is the first item under other business. So a motion has been made by Councilmember Fredericks. Is there a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We are now in our EDA meeting, and Clerk Rena, could you please call? No, we don't need to. Call, I will call the meeting to order. And first up is our organizational business. This is the appointment of officers for the Rochester Economic Development Authority for 2026. And just as a reminder to councilmembers, the 2025 EDA officers were Council President Schubring as president, Vice President Palmer, Treasurer Keen, and Assistant Treasurer, our city finance director, and Secretary, the city clerk. Is there a motion to make appointments to?
I'd, I'd make a motion to reappoint the 2025 EDA officers to the positions as listed in the packet for 2026.
Second.
There's a, a motion made by Councilmember Miller, seconded by Councilmember Wall. Any discussion, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there?
I'll move approval of the three items on the consent agenda.
A motion made by Councilmember Keen.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Doring, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We have no public hearings, reports and recommendations, we have two. And the first report is the 2026 designation of depositories for the EDA public funds, Mr. Brian Anderson.
Thank you, Council President Schubring. Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, Administrator Zelmus. This action that we're taking this evening, it happens on an annual basis and per required Minnesota state statute 118A.02 subdivision 1. And it is designating bank depositories for public funds of the City of Rochester EDA. And since the EDA has selected the City of Rochester to act as its fiscal agent, we will be, it is necessary to utilize the same depositories for the city. Therefore, I am recommending adopting the resolution designating U.S. Bank of Rochester and Wells Fargo Bank of Rochester as depositories for public funds for the Economic Development Authority. And that U.S. Bank of Rochester does hold our, the EDAs 2007, 2008, and 2020A debt issuances, and Wells Fargo Bank is the primary checking for the city and the EDA. And with that, if you have any questions.
Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to adopt a resolution designating U.S. Bank Rochester and Wells Fargo Bank Rochester as depositories of the public funds for the EDA for 2026.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Keen, seconded by Councilmember Palmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Item 5B, which is the 2026 Rochester EDA budget, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you. And with that, the 2026 proposed budget is before the EDA in the amount of $3,49,753. And with that, going through the revenues, you can see them listed on top with the City of Rochester Bioscience payments, the tax increment payments, and the DSEC 9th Station lease. It's the top three revenue generators for the EDA budget. With that, there are expenditures, and the main expenditures with that are the Series 2007s, 2008, and the 2020A expenditures, issuances. And the 2029 has been matured in 2025, so that will be removed. And so with that, the net revenue over expenditures is $2,289,98. Going down to the principal payments, again, for the 2007, 2008, and 2020A. and twenty twenty A, totals the amount of one million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. That amount and that information can be found on page one oh six of the ACFIR. Moving down to the repayments of the Parking Enterprise escrow in the amount of six hundred twenty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars. The amount that's still owed on that can be found on page one hundred and four in your ACFIR, and that is the amount of one point nine million dollars. Being that twenty twenty nine has been paid off, at this time, we are recommending that the difference be put towards the Parking Enterprise to pay that down sooner rather than later. And even with that, the staff is still working on, being that twenty twenty nine has been paid off, decertifying the TIF, and we are working with our bond attorney on that to see if there's any opportunity with the two thousand seven and two thousand eight for, see if there's a call on those. So we're gonna be working with our bond attorney in the meantime, and if there's a change or a better plan, we'll bring that forward before the EDA for action. But with that, the total net flow after all debt services is a hundred and seventy-two thousand thirty-four dollars. That'll go towards the Bioscience Building, that can be found on page one hundred and five in your ACFIR. Quickly going over to the Minnesota Bioscience Building Center and Development Infrastructure Service Center, and this is more of a P and I, but you can see your operating revenue for them up on top in the amount of four million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand thirty-nine dollars. Then you have the BioBus information underneath, operating expense in the amount of one million five hundred and ninety-four thousand, hundred and ninety, hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the net available for debt service in the amount of three million sixty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Moving that down and then taking out what can be found on the front page as well, the tax increment revenue deduct the five hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and you get three point six five five million dollars. And then you have the other debt uses underneath that for a total annual debt service of two point two three eight million dollars. And again, taking a look at that prepayment for the Parking Enterprise, moving that amount up to six hundred and twenty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars, leaves us with a net after operations of debt service of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And again, that goes on in your ACFIR, can be found on, not directly, but it feeds into for the EDA fund balance. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Any questions on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion adopting a resolution approving the 2026 Rochester Economic Development Authority budget.
Motion made by Councilmember Miller, seconded by Councilmember Doring, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Moving on, is there a motion to adjourn the EDA?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wall.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Miller, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are back to the City Council meeting and other business. Our first act in other business is to adapt, to adopt the findings of the Rochester EDA.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion made by Councilmember Doring, seconded by Councilmember Wall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Is there any other business? Mayor Norton.
Those Palmer both times, by the way.
Think you were gonna give me a promotion there for a minute. Just a couple things I wanted to close out the meeting with, from my, from my voice, there may be others. One, I really appreciated tonight the very serious discussion, the ability to share a variety of opinions and act respectfully. This is what we should see more of across the country, and we don't see it enough. So I just wanted to commend you all on tonight's actions and the respectful manners in which you treated each other and the seriousness with which you took your votes. I also want to say that a question was raised about, you know, what happens when a city takes a position, but the federal government, it doesn't change the federal government's position? And I would say two things, and one of these is partly from being a former legislator, but also as someone who does lobby at the state and federal level. When a city takes a position, even if it cannot be implemented, and I use the example of what happened with St. Paul recently on some gun legislation that they took, they knew they couldn't implement it, but they took it to make a point, and so they had a position as a council in order to lobby their state and federal colleagues. And so it isn't pointless, even if it can't be immediately forwarded into, you know, some sort of punishable or, or action being taken on immediately. It does set a tone and a message that a majority of the council stands. So I just wanted you to know that that isn't a waste of time. And the last thing I want to mention is, the U.S. Conference of Mayors has an opportunity regularly for mayors to sign on amicus briefs and/or positions to the legislature, and I do that throughout the year quite often. I will say the U.S. Conference of Mayors is a remarkable organization that has bipartisan support on almost all the issues that surround cities. Because we're about the people that live in the city, not about the politics, partisan politics. So it really is a pleasure to be there, and today I signed an amicus brief, and I didn't mention it earlier because I didn't want it to get confused, and I'm allowed to sign in one of three ways. I can sign one as an individual, I can sign one on representing my government, and one that the council has voted on and I'm standing with the council. I took this one on as an individual, and it is an amicus brief in support of local control and allowing Minneapolis and St. Paul and other cities across the country to self-determine the kind of government they have and whether they want to be a sanctuary city or not a sanctuary city. And my role there wasn't because I'm speaking on behalf of what we may want to do on a council, but I'm supporting and support, and I did it as an individual, not, not under the city's name, per se, because I do believe that, that in, I do not want preemption happening by the federal government, taking our right away as a city to be able to determine how we control ourselves. So I just want to, I didn't want to bring it up during the discussion, I thought it would muddy the waters, talking about another amicus brief, so I just, but I did want to tell you, those opportunities do come up, I do sign them, and unless I have permission from all of you, I sign as an individual and not representing the City of Rochester as a government body. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Miller.
Sure, thank you. I did have a question, because I feel like there's some lingering comments that came up or questions that were raised in open comment, and I continue to point people to our frequently asked questions on the Immigration Resource page. My question to staff is, perhaps the city administrator, is how are comments and questions brought up in open comment potentially considered to be added to that frequently asked questions as the resource is updated? And I ask that because I would like to be able to continue to refer to that as the source of reliable, up-to-date information that's brought up in the community.
I'll give you a very non-definitive answer, which is it depends on what is brought up, and if it's something that the team who's here listening, or sometimes at home listening, think could be, is a viable type of FAQ or resource to be able to put on that page. Some of the things that get brought up are not resource questions, they're more probably policy questions or operational questions or aspirational questions. And so we continuously have a chain of communication going on, where if we either see information that's coming forward, not necessarily at the DIES, but through any number of channels, then we look to update that, even if it's shared somewhere else already, to be able to reshare that in that location. So I would say we probably update it five times, maybe more a week, and I would look to others if they have a more succinct answer, but it really, speaking to your specific question about open comment, it depends on what the comment is and whether or not it's something that would be a viable resource on that page, or if it's a more open-ended question about ability to report. I mean, there are a lot of operational questions that were also raised that probably are more challenging on that page to communicate with.
I guess maybe to frame the question slightly differently, is the open comment, the questions raised in open comment, are those considered in the evaluation of which questions are answered on the frequently asked questions page of the, of the city website?
They are things that we have considered in the past, there's quite an array of questions that get asked that sometimes are rhetorical questions, and so we get those as, based on the interpretation of what, whether it is a firm question or not, and whether we think that it would be helpful to try to communicate that in such a, I guess, static forum in an FAQ, or whether we would direct someone to another resource.
Okay.
It is a, it is an art, because we don't want to make it appear that we're providing legal advice, for example, because there are a lot of personal decisions that are wrapped up in how each individual, you know, wants to choose to, to do that, and so we do try to be cautious so that people are not overly confident in their actions either by something that we put there versus something that they could access themselves and be able to make their own determination of their comfort level.
Okay, thank you, and I see this disclaimer on the page, so I appreciate that context. An issue that I've raised and I want to continue to raise, and I spoke with the mayor today about potential avenues, is now that we're into February, clearly rent is due for many people. We've talked about rental assistance in the past and the implications of eviction and our stability as a city. And so I would like to raise this point and get council feedback, because through the mayor's office, we could send a letter to Governor Walz encouraging his office to consider potential action to protect people from evictions, and I would be in favor of us doing that, and I chose not to bring it as a CIA because of the timing considerations and the urgency of us now being into February and many people still being afraid to go to work. It is my understanding that the governor's office is the only entity in the state that could issue an executive order implementing an eviction moratorium, and so I would bring that up in other business for discussion.
Mayor Norton.
I would be happy to write a letter saying such if we have support from the council here. Just.
Councilmembers, any, anybody want to weigh in on this topic? Councilmember Fredericks.
Absolutely. There's a lot of reasons for eviction. It isn't just not paying their rent because they can't go to work. I would actually lean that there's more other reasons that people get evicted than that. So to just have a more torment, and all of a sudden you can't kick people out if it's a blanket deal, I, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna ask councilmembers, since this is not, this is an other business, if you can just say yes or no, that whether or not you agree with Councilmember Miller's request that we support the mayor writing to the governor on this? So if you do?
A point of order, we, we don't take votes at other businesses.
We're not taking a vote, councilmember, no, we're not. We're not taking a vote. If you are in favor of it, nod your head, that's not a vote.
A vote.
That is not a vote.
Well, it makes no standard to say that the City of Rochester City Council voted to do this. So that's a point of order, and I don't agree that we can do that. It's a separate school.
Well, we do that at our study sessions, councilmember. So, and I think, I think other business is somewhat a quasi-study session.
Then I'm a no.
Okay. Any other folks want to weigh in? Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't like the yes or no thing here, I mean, there's, there's, I agree with Councilman Fredericks, this is bigger than just this, and just to wade into it, just based on what's going on, I, the one thing that's really bothering me about all this work is that we have no data behind anything that we're doing, we're just going by gut feel that there's problems to have, and I believe there are problems that can, that are out there, but how we isolate our support for those specific problems, I, I don't know how that would be done, and until I would, I have difficulty supporting.
Okay, we're gonna move on, is there any other, other business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Chief, you're here, and I'm glad you're here, because body cameras, the City Council decided that that was important for our patrolmen, for our citizens in Rochester to have body cameras, and we've had those for a long period of time, and you agree they're great, but in the Tribune today, Minneapolis Tribune, they're reporting that Minneapolis will now have, of all the ICE offices, will have body cameras up in Minneapolis, and so I think that's a good step forward for all of us. The, the bigger issue for me is the Soldiers' Field Memorial, and so I'm gonna ask a question for our permit people. How do we issue a permit for Soldiers' Field Memorial, and if somebody has the wrong address, how do we enforce that they not use that site?
Thank you for the question, councilmember. To be specific, a non-regulated activity is not a permit, it's a notification document. The clerk's office in this particular instance does not wade into what is likely constitutional matters. So when we get notification from people that want to express their freedom of assembly rights on public spaces, we do not tell them necessarily yes or no, outside of very limited circumstances. For example, if Soldiers' Field had a special event, and that was de facto a private space because that entity had gone through an actual permitting process, when people say that they're gathering, in this particular example, all we do is pass that information along to our emergency management and police friends, so that that information is in their wheelhouse, so that they know whether or not this gathering is going to have safety implement, implementation, implication, sorry.
So, so on the application or reference, and I agree with you, First Amendment rights, I'm all with that, but my problem is, is that if you have one address and then you show up at a different location, that's not really informing you of what's going on.
That is accurate.
And, and so is there a penalty for that?
I would be hesitant, I would be hesitant to say yes or no in that particular example, because the only penalty that we could theoretically do would be, again, to say yes or no to an application, which really is only informative for our office.
Okay, so the memorial is, is a separate entity, and, and don't they have the right to have the, the, who can be there and who can't be there? They're the ones that paid for it, they're the ones that maintain it, that's a separate thing with the Park Department?
I'd have to reference that particular data with my Parks colleagues, but my understanding of the memorial itself versus the park itself is, to my understanding, it's all public space, and as public space, the general public, regardless of their intent, so long as it's not destructive, have the right to congregate and express their amendment rights. If I'm mistaken, and I'm happy to be proven such by the Parks Department and the Soldiers' Field Memorial section itself is private, it would be governed differently in the same way that a Walmart parking lot or elsewhere is governed differently.
Can I ask that they do that, come back to us with a report?
You can ask that, councilmember, but.
Can we nod our heads?
You were against nodding heads before, and now you want nodding heads. So you look at the nodding heads, if.
There's four nodding heads, we're good.
Okay. Any other, other business? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna bring up, because we, we've talked about this in a variety of formats before, about potential programs that the city might support rental assistance programs and bring back resolution, and I, I know that there was a direction that an organization applied for funding. Are there updates on the success of that? And I would also note, in relation to the eviction question, I have seen in the community other organizations beginning to set up programs to support families who are in a state of inability to pay rent.
Councilmember Miller, thank you for your question. Yes, we did review that application, and the group approved it for the Salvation Army specifically, but we are also making sure to communicate across the community other organizations that are supporting rental assistance, so that community members who would like to support their neighbor, as you see in our update, you know, weekly, neighbors, supporting neighbors to utilize some of those spaces to make donations as well.
And should another organization that is considering addressing a, a rising need of rental assistance have a program, should we also direct them to apply in the same way that Salvation Army did?
You can certainly, yes, direct them to apply.
And if I may add, it is very important when suggesting that, that they look very closely at the requirements for, and the rubric for that grant process, and consider that in how they apply.
Okay, thank you.
Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember.
Second.
Counsel, motion made by Councilmember Fredericks, seconded by Councilmember Keen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, we are adjourned.